Good evening, Board and Dr. Schmeisser. Thanks for letting us have a conversation with you tonight about late start. We're excited about this opportunity to have a conversation and I think we got the impression that maybe what we put in the packet came across as a little bit negative. So I'd love to start tonight by saying the work we're doing on our side is anything but. I think we're looking forward to the work ahead of us. We're excited about the opportunity and as always, I think we're driven by doing what is best for kids. And so we're reading the same research we've shared with you. We feel like a lot of the research is very positive. So we look forward to starting the conversation with you tonight, hoping we walk out with a little bit more clear and articulated idea of the box we're playing in and what our marching orders are. So I think we're hoping for some dialogue tonight and looking forward to the conversation. And after dinner session, I feel a little pressure for Pete and I to be done in 10 minutes because that's the way we planned it. So. We don't have the timer. All right. Three questions we want to start with tonight that we'd love to have kind of drive the conversation once we get to it. So think through these in rhetorical form now, but ultimately want to come back to get your take on each of the three questions. First of all, should late start, as we've talked back and forth, we hear a lot about high school, but should our late start conversation as we look into our work be focused on middle and high school, more of a secondary conversation as opposed to high school? So that's question number one. The second is, should we look to implement this at the same time that we open new schools or sooner? And the third question, and this is really the meat and potatoes of what we're talking about, what are the desired outcomes as we think about this conversation and the work we're engaged in? We want to hear from you what you're hoping are some outcomes as we move down this path and look at our options. What's our target? So those are the three kind of overarching questions as we have our conversation tonight. We added a slide from what went in the packet, so this is new material for you tonight, but we wanted to share and it comes right out of the American Psychological Association's document that we put in the packet, but we wanted to showcase it tonight and talk it through briefly as we look at some of the benefits that have been seen in studies from around the country, including studies of schools right here in Colorado. And they have noticed increased rates in attendance, a decrease in disciplinary action, a decrease in student-involved car accidents, an increase in student GPA, an increase in state assessment scores, an increase in college admission test scores, an increase in student attention, a decrease in students sleeping during instruction, an increase in quality of student and family interaction. So as we look at some and for the Board, you had several documents in the packet that had similar information to what this one was, but this is a nice kind of crystal clear set of positives that we're seeing as we look at studies from around the country. And so we wanted to share that. Thanks for feedback on that, Rob. The other piece for us as we do our work, and we thought this was important for you to know as well, is we look at all the work, whatever we do, thinking about our considerations. And what do we have to take into consideration? We make whatever decision we're making. And so we wanted to start by sharing, start and end times is going to be critical. And so as we start thinking about this conversation, what is acceptable? Obviously, the recommendations are made that we shouldn't start school before 8:30. But we clearly see other schools have made different decisions in that where they've negotiated with their communities and moved their start times back, but they still start before 8:30. So that's something we need to consider. What is acceptable both from your perception, from the community's perception as we start to get feedback? Where do we stand as a community? Because our community is going to be different than any other community that may have done this or may have decided not to. We need to take a look at athletics and extracurriculars and what is the impact on those things? And when I say impact, it could be on the athletes, but it also is things like, do we have enough lights in the community to run football if we start football later? So just things like that. How does that play with athletics? And what are our opportunities inside of that? After-school jobs, responsibilities, what are our kids engaged in? How does it impact those things? How does it impact concurrent enrollment? We think about family and community. What are some of the partnerships that we're either attempting to engage in already, already engaged in? What might the impact be on those things? How might this help or hinder partnerships we're engaged in with the city, with Front Range Community College, with Ames, with CSU? And how does it shift work schedules for some of our families? The other piece is, when we think about instructional staff, what might the impact be on instructional staff and our ability to have extracurricular staff that support all the extras that we do in schools that happen after school? And is there a negative impact? Is there a positive? And we don't know what direction, but those are things we need to dig into and try to find out answers. Do we enhance our programming or does it have an impact? And so those are things I think we'll be digging into as we move forward with this work.
One of the things that we see come to the top of the list in multiple districts is transportation. And what does that mean with transportation? And I looked to Nate, we have some expertise in the room, obviously, with transportation. And what does that mean when we talk about driver recruitment and retention, which is a challenge that you see repeated in many districts? What do we see with routing? And to be clear, we have a three-tiered bus system here in Pooter School District and a route equals three runs. And so with that, you have efficiencies that are created as a result of that. And I think it's appropriate to tie routing in with cost because what does that mean when, if we have to add a route or if we gain and we drop a route, are we looking at a cost neutral solution? Are we looking at something that might be a little cost positive? And are we willing to embrace that? Or are we looking for something that might save us some funding? And if we tie that in with scheduling in in general with field trips, after-school scheduling, athletics, and how does that all fit in? To begin as part of the research, if you will, our work group is comprising a values survey, if you will, to be distributed out beginning in February 26. But the work is continuing now to create questions from an elementary, middle school, high school parent base, from an elementary, middle school, and high school staff base, and to look at and research a little bit from the community. And as Scott and I talked a little bit, he said, I could use him as an example. He is a parent of an elementary student, a high school student. He is also a staff member, so he's going to answer the survey. Will you be in conflict with yourself or will you answer it differently? I'm not sure. Yeah, yeah, he could answer it multiple ways. But that just shows how many, how much feedback we're trying to get as part of that value survey. And we hope to get that out and back on March 12. And as we look at that, we're going to evaluate our interest as a community through all those areas in late start and try to gain some valuable feedback that then we will look towards a scenario committee to be created following standardized selection processes that we've already done, to take the information from that value survey. And they're intended to start meeting. And again, a lot of this, to be sure, and with your direction is proposed, if you will, to take that survey information. And it'll be comprised of parents, community members, teachers, principals, central office staff. And they will take the information from that value survey and try to come up with about three or four scenarios. And the intention is that they'll meet several times from May through July. And then following that, they'll come back and develop a second survey. A second survey that then will run concurrent with community engagement. But the second survey, it'll be a scenario survey and we'll try to open that up in August, end of August through September, and try to gather specific feedback on what they have learned through the value survey. And we hope to come back in April, April 24th, I think we're scheduled to kind of give you an update on the first survey. And then as the scenarios continue and we take a summer break, coming back, looking at community engagement with dates to be determined, but looking at like end of August through September date. And like I said, the information running concurrently with community engagement, specifically with feedback at the feeder systems. We're looking at probably two meetings within the feeder systems and a couple of meetings with staff, getting staff input sessions. And as we raise this awareness, trying to gather specific information on those three to four late start type or other information that we gain scenarios and then create a forum, much like we did with LRP with Q and A. And then bring back that information to you with, I guess, October of 2018. Sounds like a long ways away, but it's not really. To get information back collated, get it back in a recommendation presented to the Board in November, November 13 of 2018. And you will have opportunity to discuss, we hope, at that time in November 13 and then following on December 11th and maybe take action in December or coming back from the winter break of 2018 in January with possibly the earliest implementation. As Scott mentioned, maybe do we go before the opening of schools, perhaps at 2019, 2020? So that's a quick rundown of where we're at at this point in time.
Okay, so sorry, I wasn't entirely clear whether you were done with the presentation. Okay, thank you very much. And Board, do you have some questions, comments? Carolyn?
So I know that Weld County this last year implemented later start times for their high school kids. And so I just had wondered about how their experience was going. So I did talk to a member of their Board of Education and asked them how it was going and some reasons why they decided to do it. And it seemed like to me they had moved really quickly and they did confirm for me that they did move really quickly. And the reason they were able to move so quickly is they told me that they had been working very closely with the City of Greeley to provide busing for all of their high school students to school using the city buses. And so that's why they were able to do that with a very strategic alliance with the City of Greeley. Now, I know that we're much more spread out and that might not work for all of our kids, but I had wondered if any consideration had maybe been given for kind of out-of-the-box thinking where could we rely on city buses for kids to get to school? And if we had a strategic alliance with them, and could we increase the amount of city buses or could they increase the amount of city buses? Have we had any of those kinds of talks or do you? I mean, I'd just like to expand on it and see what, hear what you think.
Yes, and when I read your comments, we have talked to the City of Fort Collins and it's a great observation that we are more spread out. But as we've looked along some of the corridors, those that have watched the LaPorte Corridor for the Pooter High School students, a lot of them utilize the transport system. A lot of north-south along the Shields Route utilizes transport because you have Front Range, you have Rocky, and then you have CSU. And we have had talks with Kurt Ravenschlag, who's the transport director. And I know they give bus passes, but I don't have data on how many student ridership data, you know, what they carry, you know, in their database. But we have talked to them and I think is a great point is that as we get this conversation moving forward, there may be more opportunity and more necessity, if you will, to try to and it works in several ways. I think it's not just the availability of the routing, which is for transport, you know, to meet our schedule times, which if they change, we can visit with them. It's trying to enhance, I think, the ridership amongst our students, which is a bit of a challenge, you know, from a high school to a middle school level. And what will that look like and how we can promote that? And I think there's, you know, kids ride free and all that. So that's a great, I think it'll open up some more opportunities, a lot dependent on what the Board may choose to do.
Okay, and then just one follow-up. They were telling me that one reason this worked out really well for them, that they were only able to staff their buses like 75%. That they only had 75% of the drivers that they needed and that their high school routes were really not very well, they didn't have a lot of ridership. They didn't have very many high school students taking the bus. So it wasn't a very good return on investment for them. And that got me to thinking, do we have any numbers? Do we know how many of our high school kids are actually riding the bus to school?
Yeah, I don't have a number on that, but I do know that from the Pooter High School to the Fossil Ridge Systems, Fossil Ridge runs with Preston and Pooter High School runs with CLP. So we try to do effective routing so we don't have what they were experiencing in Greeley. I know Rocky has, for example, four or five buses. Fort Collins High, I think, has about eight buses. And we tried to route them effectively to where we're not empty, if you will. And as I read that, I thought through where we are and I believe that without numbers that agreed that the high school ridership is the lowest of the three because kids drive or whatever opportunities avail. But yet we try to keep them as full as possible. And I think to your first point on the driver, and this gets back to recruitment and retention right now, kind of sad to say as we're getting into our second half of the school year, we're down like 15 drivers right now. And the application pool is very thin, like we don't have any. So yeah, and even with putting buses, I think we put some buses down in front of Bacon or Rocky Mountain High School or Blevins. We were hoping to start another class and we were unable to do that. So lead drivers take that, that role supervisors drive. Our Director of Transportation knows how to drive a bus. So we've had to be faced with that. And then what that does is put pressure through the system, as Scott knows, with other activities that we may not be able to handle. So it creates a, and it ebbs and flows. It's really interesting with the low unemployment rate right now. And I'm not saying that's a good thing in a way, but perhaps we're not getting as many drivers. But yeah, we look at that pretty closely.
Okay, I think I had Rob and then Kathy. Is that right? Oh, okay. And Nate, I'm sorry.
So I have about five things, so I'm assuming we're going to rotate around. So the first thing, I just want to be clear, this is intended to be a board decision? Is that correct? I mean, the Board's going to vote on this and decide or is it a superintendent decision? Well, we started talking about action in December or January, so that sort of implied to be a board decision, but I don't know what.
I heard about a board vote, but I think, Rob, that probably will have to be a bit of a discussion how we approach that.
That's fine. Okay. Well, let me just say in that context, regardless of which it is, I hope that we have a really strong partnership between the Board and the administration on this topic. I appreciate that, you know, you're looking for a dialogue tonight and to hear input and whatnot, that's great. I know some of us, I'm one, feel pretty strongly that this is a good thing to do. I mean, and I'll speak more about that in my next turn or something. But I think it's important that we have good information flow going back and forth. I think it's important that we have data to back, as much as possible, to back up some of these things like the ridership numbers and whatnot. I understand we don't have that, but it'd be good to understand that so we can talk about in a sort of more concrete way about how many kids are affected this way or that way or whatever. And that's only a piece of the puzzle, I granted. And I really like the idea of considering out-of-the-box thinking, you know, and, you know, really creative ideas. And many of them won't pan out, I get that. But still, something to think about. And I'm sure Board members will continue to get input on this, both from the public and in terms of contacts, for example, with Greeley or Cherry Creek or other folks who have implemented this, that will share with the administration. And I hope that's felt to be a good partnership. So that's my first item.
Keep rolling, Rob, it sounds like, yeah.
All right. So yeah, having said all that, I want to emphasize that, and this is not specifically directed at you, but we did get at least one piece of input today that sort of anecdotally talks about, you know, well, let's say that, you know, the reason kids aren't, you know, that the older kids are not going to bed early is because they have other things to do like, you know, social media and whatever. And I appreciate that as an anecdotal piece of evidence. And as you pointed out, in our packet and elsewhere, there are, I don't know how many medical organizations, the APA, the AMA, and I forget others, right, who have looked at the science behind this. And it is, this is not a fad. This is eminently clear from my point of view and more importantly, from the scientist's point of view, that the circadian rhythm, the bio clocks for these kids are different as they get into their adolescence and teen years. And so it's important to understand that, you know, one or more kids, you know, some kids may have a different thing than that, but the science says that the vast majority of kids struggle to get up early and their clocks say they shouldn't go to bed until later. So, you know, it's that kind of science-based thing that drives my general support for this initiative. And I hope that we're going to keep focused on what's good for the majority of kids and still hear what people have to say about anecdotal evidence to the contrary, but still. So let me just say also in that context, before I yield the floor again or attempt to yield the floor again, is that having said all that, this slide that has the impacts on it, I think is critical. Yes, I'm supportive generally of doing this idea and that, no, it was the other slide. Yeah, I'm generally, I'm supportive of doing, of investigating this vigorously, right? And I recognize that there are all these issues that need to be worked out and probably a bunch that aren't on that slide. And I look forward to hearing how and if we can work those out. And I'm open to being convinced otherwise, I guess is what I'm saying, in terms of my preference for going ahead with this. But I'd like us to approach this as, this is, the science says this is a good thing to do, let's try to figure out a way to do it. And if we have some compelling reason not to do it, well, then we won't do it, you know? Or if the community is vehemently against doing it, well, you know, we have to take into account what the community wants to do too. And that's, I guess that's my approach. So.
Okay, and Rob, if I may, this is kind of a question segueing into your last comment, but when the Board, what I hear presented and what I think we had in the original packet, there was also a timeline. That timeline is sort of a process with the decision matrix embedded into it. And from your comments, I just want to make sure that's, are we all in agreement that's what we're doing in this? We're going out and we're surveying the community to get input on the impacts, on their values, I think. Is that correct? So somewhere after the February, March timeframe, when you've put out the first survey, we will hear back results and kind of hear that input into our decision process, right? Okay, I just want to make sure we're all in agreement, what we're doing in all this. So.
Yeah, one of the things I think that's important and some of it is feedback you're giving us tonight, right, is how do we, so when we've met several times as a team. And when we start thinking about this, it's a complex challenge. And if there's no parameters, there is an endless opportunity for, or endless supply of opportunities, I guess. You could shift little bits of things and you have millions of possibilities. So that's why the question of is it middle, high school? That's a critical question for us to answer. Beginning to understand what our community can support in terms of start and end times gives us some opportunity to know where can we play in, right? Is it okay? We talked loosely about, is it okay to start an elementary student as early as 7:30? Is that, so you start to get parameters so that we know when we start talking transportation and effects on the backside of the school day, that'll help us when we start to dig into these questions. But until we start to nail that sandbox a little, it's hard to know how to answer any of the questions, so.
Okay, and I know for my part, I view this all as kind of a cost-benefit analysis. So I know it's hard to quantify a lot of these things and I saw a lot in the packet also that seems to talk about the benefits. I saw things that indicated no school ever reported any negative impacts while there were, many of them showed positives, but it was very difficult to quantify those. But that said, we have a sense that it's positive. The question is how positive, how much cost are we willing to incur and which areas? It would be how I'd love to see this presented. So when you added the benefits, I think that's great, as long as we also start thinking about the values, the costs, the, you know, how far, how much benefit is there?
Right, and I guess that's one of the questions I would pose right now when we think about, from the Board's perspective, if you just think about cost, as we start looking at scenarios, are we thinking about them from cost-neutral, cost-neutral plus some small percent? So what are we playing with, right, in terms of that?
Yeah, I'll add on to that comment. I had written down, so I wouldn't forget, that as we go through this process and get a little further in, we'll have, we have the opportunity now that we did not have last time this came up, that we have routing software where we can run an endless amount very, actually quickly. I won't, I don't want to minimize the amount of work it takes for staff, but that it is doable. And last time it really realistically was not. So we have the software we need now. And one of the things that it will do is it will operate within parameters that we set for it. So if we are running what we think might be an ideal and it turns out it's way too expensive, we can pull back the money parameter to an acceptable level and see how much does it shift. So we have an amazing tool that will help us to kind of define some parameters, run them, come back and say, yeah, but, how about if we, you know? So we'll have quite a bit of back and forth, I think, during this process.
Kristen or Nate, did you have a question? Okay, so Kristen and then Rob, I guess.
I was going to say, that said, Sandra, if we do have that ability, can we start from what is scientifically right now, best-case scenario? Say, we need to start looking at 8:30 or later for high school because that's, and middle school, because that's what all the scientific research is showing, that you're getting these benefits when you start at 8:30 or later. So if we have the benefit of running scenarios, let's start there and say, we're going to do middle and high school at 8:30 and see what happens. And if we need to start rearranging, we can start, you know, from there. Because if you're looking for parameters to start running at, that's what I would want to see is at least starting at the 8:30, start from middle and high school. And then back up from there.
Well, Nate, do you want to respond to that? Because I will after.
Well, I think that's one of the issues is the issue, you can't, I don't, I think it would be much more expensive to drop off middle school and high schoolers about the same time because now they're dropped off at different times. They ride, oftentimes ride on the same bus, but they're dropped off at different times. So if they start around the same time, I think you're going to have a cost factor that's going to be tough to manage and a driver factor too.
Right, and if I could add to, isn't just the start and ending time of the school itself, it's the earliest and latest drop, pick-up and drop-up? It's how long have they been sitting on that bus, not just, yeah.
Right, and what, my argument for that would be, you know, it doesn't have to, I'm not saying that start middles and high schools at 8:30 at the same time necessarily, but what we do now, let's say the earliest start time for a high school or a middle school would be 8:30. And just, so we're shifting so that that's the earliest start time. And however we do it now, we can keep it the same, but just see how that looks as a place to start.
And if I may respond to that, the one thing that it makes me, another thing that came out of that most comprehensive document was not a lot of research that they reviewed had been about what happens when you move younger kids earlier. And I know that Cherry Creek ended up, their answer was that they did have to put the younger kids. And I, I know that Cherry Creek ended up, their answer was that they did have to put the younger kids, I think it was 7:55 is what they did. But I would, you know, if we just start with 8:30 for high school, it, it could immediately put that as one of the costs we have to incur in, in review. It would be my only point, but I know the staff will do a lot of work on this. I just, it's kind of how I'm thinking about this. I want to make sure everybody else is aware of what I'm, what I'm looking at.
Which is a much bigger proportion of our students, or the younger ones.
Yeah, absolutely, and definitely taking all of that into account. But I, I'm just, what I'm hearing from you is that you need some starting parameters. And that's, you know, from, from my point of view, I'd like to see that as a starting parameter and see where that puts us. If that puts us putting kids on buses at 6:30 in the morning, that's obviously a no-go. But if it's something that we can start at and say, oh, you know what, if we finagle this, that, and the other thing, and it's starting to, to look good, that's, it, it's just a good starting point from my perspective.
Yeah, we could build, I mean, just in my head, I see a couple of different things, right? Obviously, you could do, you could increase busing, keep elementary the same as it is. That's obviously not cost neutral. You could flip it with an 8:30 start time or an 8:40 start time, and then you have elementary students starting earlier. And essentially, we've moved the start time for high schools back an hour, so we could move everything in the system back an hour. There's negatives in that for each one, and so that, those are scenarios we could certainly start with.
Okay, let me take a deep breath. So I have questions from Nate, okay, Nate keeps backing out. Let's go Kathy and Rob, how about that, so?
Well, a question and a comment. So on the survey that we're doing in February, did you say that's going out to community members as well? Or I, I see you looking questionable and you nodding. Is, is that going out to community as well as parents and students?
And high school students.
But, but not to community?
Yeah, to the community as well.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that, thank you. So I, I just want to say, well, let's say first of all, one of the things, one of the things that you guys asked us was, should late start be implemented for middle school and high school? I'm just gonna go through the three questions, 'cause you said you wanted board feedback. Yeah, I think so. Middle school and high school, because everybody I've talked to over the years, and this has sort of been on my bucket list for a very long time, has said that this is when kids start having issues, is in, in middle school. So you shouldn't leave out the middle school kids. Should the board implement a late start before or at the same time as new schools identified in the 2016 bond open? I don't know. I mean, personally, I would have liked to see it done by the time my kids graduated from high school, but that's too late. So whatever you can do to, to make it the most efficient thing possible while trying to meet the needs of students, because what we're trying to do here is to do what's best for kids, right? So I don't know the right answer to that question, but I have faith that you guys have a good plan, that you have a lot of considerations, that you understand a lot of the benefits of this. So go for it, go, go figure it out, 'cause I, I mean, it's not my job to tell you what to do. Third, what is the desired outcome as related to the implementation of late start? Again, to do what's best for kids. So I see a later start time for middle and high school students solving issues with mental and physical, mental and physical health for kids, right? That's huge, that's, you know what? By giving kids an hour more of sleep, maybe we can reduce some of the mental health costs that we have, not only in our schools, but in our community. We can reduce car accidents. And heck, kids falling asleep in class, we can reduce that. That is awesome, because if they're not awake, I will just bet you anything they're not learning. And the snoring person next to you is probably distracting you who are awake from learning something. So honestly, I think it's great. I'm really pleased that you guys are moving in this direction. And I'm really, I was very pleased to see that you have a process and a plan, because to me, that's what it takes. We have to go out to our community, we have to ask them the questions. If their answers are different than my answers, great, I agree with Kristen. Let's start with what is best, like starting school at 8:30 or after for middle and high school students. And, you know, if that's not what our community thinks is best, that's fine. There was one student in the, one school, and the information they handed out, it's actually going back to an earlier start time after experimenting with a later start time. I'm certainly hoping that's not where we end up. But I had one person send a letter to us saying, yeah, you should do this, why haven't you done it already? And you're like, well, okay, yeah, we could go ahead and just say, okay, in September, August, we're gonna start implementing this. Best practices, in addition to say schools should start at 8:30 or after, also say that you should have a year-long conversation with your community, because it's a two, two-way thing, right? We need to, A, learn what our community thinks about this and explore all the ramifications, but it's also an educational tool to say, why would we want to do this? Because a lot of people out there, I think a lot of people are aware of the research, but not everybody. Anyway, that's all I have to say, but thank you guys for pursuing this, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, and Rob?
So I still have a couple things, we'll start, I'll just pick one. The, the value survey that you're talking about doing in February, can you give me a better sense of the kind of question that you're gonna ask in the value survey? Because I'm, I'm struggling, I'm still struggling. I mean, I understand what we were given is, you know, the idea is it's gonna be a temperature read of the community, but, but I don't know what kind of question you would ask to get at that. And I, and I sort of have a follow-up piece to that, depending on what you say. Sorry.
No, no, fine, no. I think some clarity around that, that'll help. And again, it's, knowing that it's still in a draft form, but I think questions like, first of all, for the elementary, what school does your child attend? Would base camp be a consideration? What about after-school activities? Do you have issues with, with other childcare and conflicts? And what are those times that you may pick or may not pick that might be optimal or not optimal? It's just, it's pretty broad-based just in the beginning, just to get a temperature read, if you will. It's not meant to truly dig in, but I think, like, for example, the elementary survey may have 10 questions on it, and then there's a box that we're anticipating will be options for other, you know? Please comment, because sometimes we may learn more from a comment than we do from the actual box.
Sure, that's, yeah. So I guess the, the thing that concerns me a little bit about, I mean, I understand the desire to do that, I get that. What I don't understand, I guess, is how the community, so let me, let me say something in a positive way and then a sort of a fear, right? In a positive way, I think that we'd like to, it would be, how will, I'm, yeah, sorry, I'm not, how will the community, a community member who hasn't been involved in this issue, hasn't been paying attention to the Facebook groups around it, or the research, or anything else, how will they have any context in which to answer this question, right? What, what I don't want to, yeah, so how will they have any context in which to answer the questions? I mean, what will, what will be going through their mind when they read this thing? Will they understand why we're even considering it? What are the, what, what's the positive potential outcome of this for students? Will they go into a panic about, oh my God, they're gonna change the, the, the times, and I don't even know why they're doing this, and it's certainly gonna impact my this, that, and the other thing, and so I'm just gonna, you know, pull the lever on a negative here? That's the fear part, obviously. Really, the broader question is how are they gonna have the context to be able to answer this thing in a, in a meaningful way?
Yeah, it's hard, Rob, to, to paint context and try to get a broad-based survey, right? But if I were to say to you, how early is too early for elementary school kids to go to school right now? Even in your context, you have some answer to that right now. I will answer it in a certain way for my daughter, and I have context, right? But I still in my mind have what might be the earliest or too early, right? I heard Kristen say, if they're on the bus at 6:30, there's a value, right, that we just heard. And that's all we're attempting to do, is try to get some high-level, what are parameters? And it'll give us some guidance when we get broad-based feedback around what are some options we might be able to delineate inside that. And, and then when we start the community engagement, we're gonna have to paint context when we take scenarios out to people and have several content, or several scenarios that are driven by what our communities told us, right? So that, but at the, at the high level, we believe it will give us what we need to help us do that work.
Okay, so let me take it, let me take the specific example you brought up. I'm an elementary parent, not anymore, but we're pretending. I'm an elementary parent, and I don't have any high school kids, and I don't have any middle school kids, I'm just an elementary parent. And I get this question that says, how early is too early for my elementary kid to go to school? Or how early, what's the latest? I'd be comfortable, or either earliest, sorry, the earliest I'd be comfortable having my kid go to school. If I don't have any sense about why you're asking this, or what the benefit is, or that my kid in high school is maybe gonna benefit from some change, isn't there at least a potential bias that's gonna say, I don't know, whatever's convenient for my schedule? Or I, you know, I think it should be later because kids are, because my kids get up, I don't know, you know?
Rob, I would suggest, even with context, that may still happen. I might still look at it and say, look, I don't go to work till 9:30. So I would say the earliest my daughter should go to school is 9:30 or 9 o'clock, or whatever. So I think the answer's yes, but when we look at a broad-based sweep of information, we believe it will give us a ballpark of where our community's at.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the bias in there, and we ought to think about that, so. And, and you did say in your, in your plan that at least you're gonna run that bias to, you know, got it?
Sixteenth.
Sixteen, yeah.
Sixteenth of February.
Okay, fine, so I don't know how you want to do this, Kristoff, I got a couple other things, but.
Rob, I think, keep going, and, no, seriously, let's, let's maybe, oh, can you have a question or comment too?
Do you have a follow-up on the one?
Yeah, if I, sorry, if I can just quickly follow up on somebody you had said. So, you know, as far as giving the context, have you asked any of the elementary school staff members at all about, about this? Because that may help too with the, with getting those questions answered of what's too early for an elementary school student? And, I mean, maybe, maybe not, I don't know if they would, that would provide you some good information?
Yeah, it's, it's part of that survey, so they will be part of the survey. All of our staff will have an opportunity to give us feedback as part of that survey.
Okay, great, thanks.
And keep in mind that our elementary schools, there are 27 of them, they start at a wide variety of times now. They have some, a couple very late and a couple very early and a whole glob in the middle. And so the parents can answer based on their own experience at the time, too.
Okay, and Rob, just so you know, I, or for the board, I, it's 8 o'clock and this is the only subject, so I'd say let's kind of ferret this out a little bit, let's not limit, okay? So keep asking and we'll, if you guys get tired, you'll let me know.
So, I'm never gonna get tired. So anyway, so.
I'm tired.
Yeah, I gotta, gotta uphold my reputation, right? So, so have you spoken with other districts yet who have implemented this? Or chosen not to implement it?
That's kind of a two-part. We have conversations started with Littleton Public Schools, and then we've had a call into Brighton. And, because both are similar, Littleton's like got 15,000 students, I think Brighton has like 18,000. I think their geographic area may be a little smaller, but trying to get some input from them just for that and have not gotten very far in the return dialogue. So, but that's a great question and we're trying.
Okay, good, I, I definitely want to, in terms of what I'd like to see out of this, I definitely want to see that happen. I know Cherry Creek is not, Cherry Creek has, has implemented this year, and they're talking about collecting data as they go along. Now, you know, it may not be in time for us to make a decision, but at least we ought to get a temperature read out of them and understanding how they've dealt with some of these impacts, right? And I think I sent an email earlier today about another school district. That's what, I forget what the school district was, but there's another school district that's considering it that was in Chalk Beat today. So that's, that's critical to learn from what people have already done. Let's not reinvent the wheel if we can avoid it. Now, as regard to your, as regard to your questions, I guess my, my feeling is that we ought to do, I'm gonna answer the questions and then I'm gonna make a comment on my answers, okay? So I think we ought to do high school and middle school. I think the sooner that we do this, the better. So arbitrarily waiting for the opening of the new schools, particularly since that's a little bit in flux, and that when that might happen is not my ideal. I'd love it to be cost-neutral, because we're gonna be forcing or facing some cost challenges coming up. Having said all that, yes, having said all that, I would like us to recognize, or at least to follow the principle, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Right, so, yeah, I'd love all those things to happen, but I'm open to a scenario that says, hey, this is the best thing we can do, but it requires us to wait to the new schools to be open to minimize the cost. Or it doesn't matter about that, it's gonna cost us a little more to do this, and a little is, I understand, in the eye of the beholder, right? A little bit more to do this, and, you know, we need to find the money to do it, or else we need to go to the voters, assuming that the community is sufficiently supportive of this, to get the money for that. So I'm open to some scenarios that vary a little bit from the, from the, from the ideal, if you will, answers that I gave you. Let's not, let's not say if we can't get it all just the way we want it, man, we'll just bag it. You know, because I think that's the wrong answer for the majority of kids. Again, absent some compelling reasons of the contrary.
Nate?
Just quickly, I support this analysis, and that's all I'll say about that.
Thank you, okay, and Carolyn?
I was just looking on Cherry Creek's website, and I see that they do have their survey posted. I don't know if you guys have already looked at it, but it was pretty interesting that one of the biggest values or biggest concerns for elementary school-aged children was not the start time, but the end time. It's, so it's funny, the things that will maybe come up when you do the survey that maybe you wouldn't have anticipated, because I wouldn't have thought that that would have been like a value. It's a challenge, yeah, childcare, yeah.
And as we look at value, we're looking at both those for that reason, you were, gotta be, so thanks, Carolyn.
And Kristen?
Yeah, and I'd just like to echo Rob's here, that when I suggest starting at the 8:30, that's just a starting point and let's, you know, and I know that you guys are gonna do a great job of looking at this and won't let the, you know, perfect be the enemy of the good, so. And this is a huge project, so thank you so much for looking at it. I do wish it had started earlier, so, because this is gonna be implemented probably the year after my daughter graduates. So, but as a, you know, as a mom who has a daughter who, you know, I basically have to, you know, cattle prod her out of bed to get to school by 7:40, it's, it's hard, it's really hard. So thank you so much for doing this and really appreciate it.
Okay, and Susan?
I wanted to echo what, what Kristen said too, because I, it's an exciting prospect, and I, I suspect when you do your survey, you're gonna find the, the community is supportive of it and excited about it. The research certainly sustains it, and so many of our community members know that. So thank you for putting together, I was looking at your timeline and, and the organization that, you know, that you have, and I'm looking forward to, you know, the periodic updates that, that we get, that we can be doing that too.
Rob?
Yeah, I guess, I guess. Yeah, yeah, no, no, you, you all, you all reminded me quite appropriately that though I ask a lot of questions, I also want to say thank you very much for doing this, because I think this is really gonna be a good thing for our kids if, if it turns out the community is supportive and we can address these considerations you're talking about on this slide. And I know it's a, it's a large task involving a bunch of folks in the administration and eventually in the schools and, and the, the bus drivers and everything, so thank you so much. And I also know you got a lot of other things going on, so this ain't, this ain't, this ain't the only rodeo, if you want to use that kind of terminology, so thank you very much.
Okay, so does that cover tonight for, okay? You do have, okay, go right ahead.
I just, out of curiosity, just so everybody here can, can kind of understand how early some kids are getting on the bus, in Wellington, what is the earliest time a child gets on the bus out there?
I'm so glad somebody asked that question.
And actually, and actually, I, I just put down in my notes to put in a Friday memo to give you the start and end times for each of our schools, as well as the earliest and latest drop-off. So you have some context for what we're doing now.
I was just sharing with Susan how early I used to get on the bus, and it was like torturous.
So we'll use this for trivia at some point. So we'll use this for trivia at some point and, all right. So right now, the earliest that's students, I'll just say students get on the bus is a pickup and it's a, it's a drop-off pickup from Pooter High School up in Redfeather, 604 AM. And, and CLP 608, because they ride together and they head down 74 and they get picked up then in Livermore and then they get brought to CLP. CLP students get dropped off and then the Pooter students, it's, it's a long ride. Some of those bus ride distances, the longest one that I found was 112 minutes. I have one at 98 minutes and the earliest elementary other than that was Istone at 6:30 in the morning, which runs with Wellington, which is also at 6:30 in the morning. So it just gives you an idea. And then some of those routes, the Pooter route, for example, doesn't get back, back up to Redfeather until 5:11.
And, and just to be clear, do you have the start and end times for the schools so that nobody thinks we're starting school at 6:30?
Yeah, I, I don't have that here, I have the bus, the bus times and the bus, bus route. Scott, you should know all that, right?
Yes. 7:25 at CLP.
So, thank you for asking.
Go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just observe that there are some school, some students who get in well before those start times as well. I know my kid in band at, at Fort Collins High School, there's a zero-hour class and I, I forget when it was, it was like six something, he was getting into school. I mean, you know, whatever. And, and I understand that people make trade-offs about what extracurriculars they're gonna participate in and what the consequences of that are, so we shouldn't base everything on that kind of thing, but we should also know that there are important pieces of, of some students' high school experience, which, by the way, I understand also includes sports, so we have to include that, that are outside the school hours and yet may be dictated by the school hours. I guess the only other thing that your comments about Redfeather and whatnot bring up is that, is that we may need to think in segments a little bit, right? I mean, I'm sure you know this already, right? But, but it may be that the, that the mountain schools are an outlier for one reason or another and we shouldn't let that drive the rest of the system necessarily. And that also, of course, gets back to when we have new schools, some of these driving times for, for what are currently Pooter High School students may be different as well. So that may factor into when do we do this? I, I get all that, so thanks very much again.